Good morning, everyone. Cynthia Stewart here. Tom Lovett.
Here.
Richard Werner.
Here.
Mohammed Job.
Here.
Brian Campion. I saw Brian.
Here I am.
Here he is.
Getting a new charger.
Tammy Colby.
Good morning.
Caleb Greenwood. Not yet. Brianna Marsh.
Here.
Secretary Saunders.
Here. Good morning.
And Chair Samson.
Here. Good morning. Thank you. All right. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. I will then turn it to public to be heard. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. And just as a reminder, we ask members to limit their comments to two minutes and you're always welcome to submit written comments for inclusion with the minutes. So with that, Kim Gleason, good morning. I see you have your hand raised and so far I don't see anyone else. So, Kim, the floor is yours.
Good morning. I, Kim Gleason, Grand Isle. I come to raise awareness on an issue that I was surprised to learn and I'm sure probably should not have been. In my time on the State Board of Ed, I worked on the 2200th Independent School Rules twice. And in the course of the work I'm doing on the Task Force now, and this is not speaking as a Task Force member, but rather a surprised, I guess, community member with a history in working on the Independent School Rules. I learned that there is, I have great concern for the equitable use of our public dollars at independent schools that are not accepting the public tuition as the full amount that is due for a student. As an example, and I'll follow with written comments at some point in the not-too-distant future, I'll pop back on in December. But an example that was pretty alarming was to think about a student from Win Hall, which is fully non-operating, having access to their approximately $20,000 voucher, public tuition voucher, choosing to attend Stratton Mountain School. The only families eligible to be able to do that have to be able to pay an additional approximately $36,000 to use that $20,000 voucher at Stratton Mountain School. That was jaw-dropping to me to learn that the use of our public tuition could be limited to only those with the economic capacity to pay an additional amount. And I know that that is likely my lack of awareness, having lived in Chitting County for 25 years and served on the Essex Westford Board for 15, where we don't have independent school tuitioning.
Present him with the resolution of appreciation. And in the meantime, because Rutland is not so far away from where I live, I'm going to try to drive up and hand-deliver a token of appreciation from the board for his service. He's served on a lot of committees and was really a critical member of the board. So our loss is the governor's gain and we wish him well in his new endeavor. I did check with the governor's office about a replacement for Lyle and there's no update. But I will keep pinging them and we'll hopefully get a new member joining the board to finish out Lyle's term. Also, Lyle had served on a couple of committees and I've asked Brian to take Lyle's place on the 2200 approvals committee. And I've asked Mohammed to take Lyle's place on the Rule Series 2370 CTE Update Committee. Both of them have graciously agreed, so thank you. So that one is, you know, we'll look forward hopefully to welcoming Lyle in December. Second announcement is I attended the Education Commission of the State's founding convening on October 31st in Hartford. This was a convening of New England states, so we had representatives from Rhode Island, Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Connecticut. I was also joined by Representative Peter Conlin, Senator Martin Gulick, and then Jason Malucci from the governor's office. So it was an all-day conference that was very thoughtfully presented. They had different breakout sessions that we perspective. I'm not sure if the work that a lot of them, it feels more like the agency would really benefit from joining. And I know that Zoe had been invited, couldn't join that day. But they are forming sort of these follow-up affinity groups in the groups of, let me just see, K-12 Funding, Artificial Intelligence, Post-Secondary and Workforce Pathways, and Federal Policy Updates. And basically, if anyone from the board would like to join any of those affinity groups and have the opportunity to just connect with other New England representatives on those issues, let me know and I will put you in contact with ECS.
Yeah, I was supposed to attend, but couldn't be there. I would, the federal stuff is a place, and I did talk to Annie about it too, and I'm happy to step in on the federal stuff.
Great. Thank you. I'll follow up with you, Tammy.
Which is gonna get trickier today.
And then my final announcement that I have is I also attended the Agency of Education statewide strategic planning retreat on November 4th. Joined by Cynthia and Mohammed, who is actually one of the speakers, and I will let them sort of provide their perspective. But it was, I mean, I have to say Zoe did a phenomenal job hosting that retreat. It was incredibly well organized. There were a number of agency people doing different workshops. And if you think about each workshop being the tip of the iceberg, the amount of work that went into preparing that and having the day flow as well as it did, I can appreciate. There was a lot of time that went into planning that. I attended workshops on the graduation requirements, Special Education Strategic Plan Input Session, and also reimagining personalized learning plans. And so I can stop there. And Cynthia Mohammed, I don't know if you want to jump in on that?
Okay, I can jump in. I just thought it, again, it's well organized and I thought there was a positive upbeat approach to all of the changes that are coming. And I know how difficult culture changes are. And I think your team and you are doing a great job really working through those with input from others. And that was a very well organized retreat. So kudos to a successful day. Thank you for that. And I appreciate your participation in the event. During my update, I'll share a little bit more about the retreat. But we learned a lot and it'll help us to move forward in an aligned direction. Thank you so much.
Well done, Zoe. Mohammed, do you want to share anything? Because you're one of the panel speakers.
Well, really, I cannot add more than what has been already said, but really, it was a great day. And thank you for anyone who was involved in making it happen. It's just something that is very timely, very much needed. And I just look forward to more sessions. I mean, it would be hard to have one like that one, but quite similar to that one, where different stakeholders can be a part of the conversation. This is very needed for our progress in what we do. Thank you all.
Any other board announcements or updates?
I want to add, at the Winnebago School District, we've been working for the last four days. Just thinking about our community, the way folks have been impacted with the Three-Square SNAP funding. Today, Wednesday, the 19th, we are organizing a food drive for the community members, really, to come grab whatsoever they might be interested. We have a little store in our school. We got some donation from some generous folks in the community to support in that aspect. So the intent is for us to have a food drive every Wednesday from today until the last Wednesday of December, just really to support community members. And while doing so, we ensure that we are supporting our students as well. We say, "A hungry belly cannot stand." So that's part of the roots, to get to the wings. Thank you.
So Mohammed, it's open to any member in the community, right?
Yes, it is open to any member of the community and people who would come to bring, I mean, to get food. They could, they are also welcome to drop off items they are using from home. So other people can benefit from it. Like we say, everyone's trash can be anyone else's treasure.
And is it after-school hours? Is that when you're doing it, or?
Today from, yeah, every Wednesday from today for the next four Wednesdays and from 3:00 to 4:00, from 3:00 to 5:00 P.M. And starting at 4:00 P.M., hot meal dinner is served to everybody as well. In addition to what folks will be taking home.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's really, that's amazing. And very timely. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board member updates? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to circle back one last time for public comment. Keeping in mind, we do have another opportunity at the end of our meeting. I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'm going to close off public comment for now. And Caleb, you are the student reporter today because we just got a text message from Brianna that she has to step out for a little bit. She has an exam that she needs to take. So Caleb, the floor is yours.
All right. Well, I will start with the unfortunate news, which I bring you with a heavy heart. The end, since the end of our last school year, we have had two students who have committed suicide as of this week. So I say that for multiple reasons, one being I know that we have parents in this meeting of not only older, but also younger children. So I bring that to you to just say, whatever your approach is, just have intent and be aware of your loved ones and who's around you. So that is my unfortunate news that I will bring in to you. But I'll chain off of Mohammed for some better news. With the whole SNAP and EBT thing, our school has actually done a very good job at supplying resources and food for students and families. Coincidentally, like just the other week, our National Honor Society Group hosted a food drive. It was super successful. Tons and tons of food, so we were really happy about that. Also, we've had teachers that have supplied like a like a Google Sheet form that has a multitude of resources, like links, phone numbers, whatever you need to get the resources that you need, like particularly to your family. That's been awesome. Also, we just started a program, I think just this past week, where at the very end of the day, like right in front of our main lobby, there'll be a couple of teachers handing out like a couple snacks, like fruit, drinks, like milk or whatever, just in case, like if someone wants it, and they offer it to everyone. But even if you aren't necessarily quote-unquote "in need," you're still able to take some, just making sure everyone's fed. So our school's actually done a very good job of that. I'm proud to say that. Our play, one of our main things that we do over the winter, so our theater performance has started, they've started doing it. They just got through auditions. So they're all casted for their roles and they've been practicing, I think, for a week or so. And also our winter sports have started as well. So excited to do that. Or excited to watch, I guess. I don't participate. That's my off-season. But yeah, we're really excited for theater coming up. We're really excited for those winter sports. And yeah.
Thanks for that update, Caleb. I really was not expecting that announcement. But as shocking as it was for, you know, me to hear it and for board members to hear it, I can only imagine how awful it would be to personally experience that. And any, any school is a small community. And the loss of anyone, I think, would be difficult, but to lose, you know, one student and two students under these circumstances, my heart just goes out to you and your whole school community, because I just can't even imagine how hard it is to process that. Mohammed, I saw that you had your hand up, but then not?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's really heartbreaking to hear what Caleb has just shared. And this is again a part of our work, honestly speaking, because so many students may be suffering without actually having anybody to talk to. So it's a part of our jobs as educators, teachers, anybody employed in a school setting, to be mindful and really observant and really have such conversations around mental health. Again, this sends me just to say what I was talking to Erin earlier about, our, our, our job is not directed to one simple item. You may be, you may be the chair of the State Board of Education, for example, but then your eyes really need to act like raiders around what's needed out there in the field. And how can we all incorporate and collaborate to really educate our students around mental health, around finding somebody to talk to? Every school has social workers, we have guidance counselors, but how are these resources explicit to our students and community members? Many parents reject the first call, trusting there is no danger to their students when a staff member calls home. I've experienced it even recently. Caleb is right. Often, these things are initiated also by really younger kids nowadays at the elementary level, I'm saying. It, it has become scary. Again, our work is not just to teach about academics. It includes way more than academics. This is a part of the roots to make sure every student is healthy and ready to learn. And we need to really launch a huge, maybe campaign around AI because most of students now have somebody to talk to online that they don't even know, that give them this advice, "You do this, you do that." And that little mindset, they trust what they've been told by that somebody behind the screen and just act as told. It's scary. So we need to educate our students more about the use of AI and trust who you talk to. Yeah.
Yeah, and that reminds me, I saw an article sometime in the last week about a young person who had committed suicide and had been talking with AI. And AI basically encouraged the kid to commit suicide or to die by suicide. And, you know, the final comment was, "Rest easy, my friend." So it really highlights that, you know, there, there are, there's technology out there that if not appropriately, you know, accessed, managed, it, it really can lead anyone in a wrong direction. You know, not providing the guidance and advice that we would hope.
Schools are good. An example is our school, our tech guy, specific tech guy, the technical integration teacher. We monitor students' activities. Anything that is towards suicidal or really flagged, it's flagged right away. So I hope every school had that strategy and doing it to monitor what students are looking into and are who, what they are researching. Sometimes you see students typing, "What the fastest way to die?" "What the best way to die?" Those kind of stuff. Scary. It's very... Yeah.
Yeah.
We need just to educate more. And so that, that is done at the school level, but what then, the question is, what parents are doing to prevent that from home? I mean, so many parents don't have that technical skills and/or even how to monitor their kids' activities in the internet.
Caleb?
Yeah, I was just gonna say to add on at the very end, that mental health has no age limit. It doesn't matter if you're 65 or if you're eight years old. There really is no age limit. It's just like physical health.
Well, Caleb, thank you for that update. Again, my condolences go out to your school community. But I just, my heart goes out to you. With that, there's no way to have a good transition from that. But we are. The next item on the agenda is an update on the Commission on the future of public education in Vermont. So since the board's last meeting in October, the Commission has published its preliminary findings and recommendations. Those were published on October 20th. We are continuing to take public comment. And as the board will recall, we had partnered with Afton Partners, which put out a survey. They received almost 4,000 responses. So they have gone through and sort of synthesized common threads of comments that were received. And they are also having five final public engagement or input sessions. And I believe the last one is being held today from noon to 1:00. So board members won't be able to make that, but that will kind of tie off the sort of facilitated public input sessions. And then, of course, we always have public comment at the beginning and end of our meetings. So we have two meetings left before we will be done with our work. One is December 3rd, and then the next one is December 17th. Both of those meetings will be virtual. And what we're doing right now is really processing public comment in response to the preliminary report with the idea that we are going to finalize the report at our December 17th meeting and then vote it out. So some of the topics that we've discussed include coupling health insurance, collective bargaining with negotiations on salaries and other compensation. We've developed sample ballot language for districts. When voters are asked to approve any budget amount, in addition to the amount of funds that are provided to the district by the Education Opportunity Payment from the state, assuming that we're moving to the per pupil spending model. We are also providing a default recommended process to follow when a school is closed or repurposed to advance local priorities and community goals. So this, it's already in statute when the agency, you know, if a school is not functioning as intended, there's already a process in statute where the agency sort of steps in and then ultimately it might come before the board. This process that the Commission is working on is keeping that, what's in statute intact, and looking at what would a process look like if a community decided for reasons that they wanted to potentially close a school? What would the process look like? So we've come up with steps that we would recommend that could be altered by a district pursuant to its Articles of Agreement, but this would be sort of a default process that actually does implicate the State Board of Ed in a couple of different ways. One is the default process is contemplating that if a school is closed, that there would be an appeal process. And the, the agency would sort of be in charge of collecting the record, so to speak, like all of the notes and the minutes and the votes. And then it would come before the State Board to render a final decision if there is an appeal from a community about a school closure. The other way that it implicates the State Board is it is recommending that the State Board revisit the draft Articles of Agreement that were developed in response to Act 46 to see if they need to be updated in light of Act 73. So we will continue to consider the public comments received at our final two meetings and then the report should be submitted shortly after our December 17th meeting. I'll pause there if there are any comments or questions. I'm not seeing any. I will say, it has really been very instructive for me to be a part of the Commission. It's brought together a lot of different people from different backgrounds with, you know, different experiences. And it's been really, really helpful to kind of process all of that and come up with something that, there hasn't been, you know, absolute consensus on everything that we've discussed, but it has definitely expanded my thinking, and I don't think I'm alone in saying that. I think it's been a really, really good group of people. And particularly when the legislature sort of narrowed our charge during the last legislative session to something that was much more realistic. I think we have really been able to operate well in that new modified environment. With that, I will turn it to committee updates. Rich, do you want to start off with that update on the State Aid for School Construction Advisory Board?
I can. So we have a meeting tomorrow where we are going to be hearing from Emily Simmons from AOE on any legal issues that we should put into our reporter considerations. And then I hope to have a framework together this afternoon to have the committee review. And then we'll have one more meeting. I think we have till the 15th to move forward with the, or to get the report to the legislature. So I'm hoping that we will meet that deadline and it's not going to be a big recommendations. It's just sure what the task force that was supposed to do, the mapping, what they're just, how their decision's going to weigh into this, but I think we should have our report completed by the required, by the 15th, which was requested of us. That's pretty much it. It's a really good group. Again, I can't sing Suzanne's praises enough. And Zoe, I really appreciate her for pushing this and helping us with this.
She's amazing. So thank you for recognizing her.
All right. So this is not a board committee. This is just a committee that, you know, Rich is representing the board on. So there's no board action to take, but I think it's really helpful to have these updates, just kind of understand what the advisory board is working on and how that kind of fits into the other, the other elements of Act 73. Any questions for Rich? All right. Well, Rich, thank you again for being on the committee, but also chairing the committee. Not sure that was your original plan, but you've done a great job of pulling everything together.
And I'll be off-chair as soon as we get this report done. There's some other really good people on the committee, so I'm hoping either have a co-chair or have somebody else. But it's been interesting. There's a lot of, lot of consideration and we'll get, you know, we'll submit a copy to the board too when we're when we're done. And I do want to also recognize Jen and Tammy for helping me. I was kind of stumbling a little bit. And you guys, your experience in doing these committees really helped a lot too. So thank you to you two.
Thank you. All right. Tammy, I'll turn it to you for the Small Schools and Spars Schools by Necessity Standards Committee.
I think we just call it the by necessity committee because we're not defining what is neither small nor sparse. We recently had a public hearing. We had a, almost, I think, 20 people, 15 to 20 people show up and give us input. That was really helpful. We will now transition back to doing some additional work as a committee. We have a meeting on Friday at 2:00. People are welcome to that, where we'll take some final testimony from some key constituent groups. And we'll be working to synthesize our takeaways from the public comments, as well as discuss the geographic information that was provided to us. And then we will have a second meeting, the first week in December, where we're going to finalize our framework. And again, we'll be just providing a framework to the legislature to think about how they might craft statute and determine our memo outline and writing assignments. And then an optional meeting if we still need it the following week. The goal is to have a draft of our framework, a recommended framework to the board to consider at its December meeting.
So Tammy, you and I had discussed this. The committee was originally under a December 1st deadline. But my understanding is that you're working with the General Assembly and it's fine that we're, we're not meeting that December 1st deadline, but we'll get it out in December.
Yeah, I'm gonna send a letter to represent, I'll send a letter to representative. Yeah, I'm gonna send a letter to represent. I'll send a letter to representative. I wasn't able to do it yesterday, so I will send a letter to them.
Okay. And I just know, you know, based on other committees that um, you know, December first that that deadline was sort of
It just it's just not practicable.
Right, it's not practical, but but also no one from the General Assembly is going to be looking necessarily for that report, like that that the report police aren't going to come out on December second. Um, I think it's just keeping in communication and getting the work done.
Yep, no, I'll be I'll be in communication with them. Um, I already reached out. I just need to get them a letter.
Great. Brian or Cynthia, I don't know if you want to add anything? You were both at the um the public comment or public input session.
Yeah, there seemed to be some confusion on our charge with some of the people who who testified, but we'll we'll kind of go over that. Um.
Well, I think the topic of small schools and funding for small schools and school closure is a is a hot button topic in the state, and I think that the public hearing was certainly an opportunity for people to voice their concerns around those issues too. And you know, that's always welcome input. Uh, our committee and what the board is charged with is actually quite narrow, and we don't have any say, right, over I mean, statute's very clear on how they define small, right, and sparse, and we don't have any say over that. Um, we also don't have any say over some of the work being done by the other task force um on school consolidation, so we were we are staying within our lane and we will be focused on defining by necessities.
All right. So board members, just to forecast here, um, we should be getting something from the committee December twelfth week of, and then um our December board meeting, uh, which I believe if I'm doing the math right, is going to be the nineteenth. Is that right? So we will have seventeenth, thank you. We will have a presentation by the committee and then um a discussion, robust discussion, and then um the board will be voting on the proposed definition of by necessity at that meeting. So I anticipate that this will be a
We will not be providing a by a definition. We're going to be providing a framework for the legislature. The legislature will be defining it. We're just giving them the towards the considerations for developing their definition.
Okay. Okay. So that will be a a, you know, longer um agenda item in December. So, all right. Um, well, Tammy, Cynthia, Brian, thank you guys for your work on the committee. Um, I know it's you you've all been juggling a lot of balls, but um look forward to December. Thanks. All right, Zoe, I will turn it to you for the secretary's report. I think Zoe's frozen.
Am I frozen?
Erin, you're not frozen, no.
I'm not. Okay, let me just pop around the corner and see if she's Sometimes it's that we lose my mind in national life. There she is. Okay.
Um, so Zoe, I think you missed it because you froze, but um and now she's gone.
Here, can you see me?
Okay. All right. So um I was turning it to you for the secretary's report.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to spend um my secretary's report providing a recap on the statewide uh planning retreat. Uh, just really appreciate that we did have participation from the State Board. Thank you for your um positive reinforcement and feedback for the entire team at the agency. It really was a collective effort and we learned a tremendous amount. So I'll share my screen to provide a little bit of a recap what occurred at the planning retreat and also to ground us in what's coming next. Um, so if you'll bear with me one moment, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, so I'll start with uh just a high level about the retreat. We had over three hundred participants join us. We had representation from over ninety-five percent of supervisory unions, supervisory districts across the state. Participation included district leaders, principals and faculty, heads of schools from independent schools, legislators from the education committees from House and Senate. We did um welcome our three State Board of Education members and we're thrilled to have your participation. We were also joined by higher education partners, students and caregivers, Governor Scott, and over fifty agency staff members um who were all there working hand in glove with stakeholders across Vermont to reflect on our educational priorities and plan a path forward together. I do want to orient you to a couple of resources that are now on our website. We have a page on um the agency website devoted to the strategic planning retreat. So you can see um more detail around each of the individual breakout sessions, and we'll be uploading some more resources that were used during those sessions. I also want to um direct you to the strategic planning framework. We have been providing an update to the State Board over the last year and a half on our process to developing the strategic plan. This provides a framework uh that highlights the background in terms of how we got to this point in reviewing the needs and landing on our uh priority areas. That also identifies the components of the statewide vision for education and numerates the values of how we work at the agency. List our strategic pillars um that are forming the structure of our strategic plan. And even though we're continuing to refine our strategic plan, we recognize that there's a sense of urgency to meet the immediate needs. And so we have launched already accelerated initiatives within these pillars that are listed in the table here. Um, and then as we move forward, we've outlined our key performance indicators. Um, so far we are now in the process of actually establishing those multi-year measurable targets. And this is um a starting point which we will use with our steering committees to refine moving forward. So I'm going to stop sharing for a minute and go back to the slides. I'll make sure that you have the links um to those resources. It'll continue to be an evolving and working document, but wanted to make sure you were aware of that as a resource. So let me go back and share my slides to walk you through some of the other details. Okay, can you see? Great. Uh, so this was, are you able to see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. This was our inaugural event. Um, the focus for this retreat was to refine the statewide vision for education and introduce the agency's strategic plan framework. We intend to host this every year. Um, subsequent years will actually be measuring our progress um relative to those goals so that we can all stay accountable um to our our objectives and make adjustments as needed along the way with input from educators across Vermont. I was really uh clear in indicating that the strategic planning retreat was not a one and done event. But rather is building upon the work that we've done to this point and will help us to refine our focus moving forward. So we um built upon what we learned. We're continuing to focus on student results and we're moving forward together. The strategic plan has been informed by the input that we received through the agency's Listen and Learn Tour, also the statewide data analysis um that we've been engaged in in a very robust way. And findings that we received from our U S Education Department monitoring visit. What was helpful as I've reflected in the past is that all that input really coherent around a core set of areas that we need to prioritize as a state to strengthen our education system. And we reflected on past and present education reform and expectations around the agency in terms of leading and supporting um the implementation of important statewide um laws and priorities. And that led us to the planning retreat where we're rolling out what we have learned to this point and are beginning to work together to refine the components of our plan. The focus of the planning retreat was to um develop that statewide vision for education and continue to get input from various stakeholders. I'll share later in the presentation um additional opportunities for stakeholder engagement in refining our vision and contributing to the strategic plan. We focused on our educational priorities and made a commitment around working together to create a path forward. We started the morning with a keynote where I walked through um the introduced our strategic plan framework and our concept for um the vision, which is to be the best education system in the country where we give all students both roots and wings. And this concept really resonated um with many of the participants. And the roots are really grounding our students in a strong sense of belonging and connection to place while also giving them the wings to soar and explore um all of their endless um possibilities. We were joined by a group of amazing Vermonters to be part of our panel, and Mohammed, want to thank you again for your involvement and for the incredible insights that you shared in that conversation. It was truly inspiring. We had um, these were Vermonters that really were chosen because they epitomized this concept of roots and wings. And it was wonderful to have the partnership with Mohammed as um the State Board of Education and the Agency of Education are really charged to work together to establish the statewide vision. So we were joined uh by Mohammed who um really contributed from his perspective, both as a state board member and also as a multilingual teacher in Winuski High School. And so it was really wonderful to have that perspective. Linda Alvarez, who is our Teacher of the Year, joined us for the panel conversation. She is the first CTE teacher to be recognized as Teacher of the Year and talked a lot about the importance of connecting students um to their passions and to success after high school. And last but not least, we were joined by Barbara Ann Cochran. Uh, so she has um represented Vermont and our country on a global stage as an Olympian and won a gold medal. And her family is often referred to as the first ski family of Vermont. So she told her story about um growing up with a ski slope in her backyard and then going on to represent Vermont in in the Olympics and talked also a lot about giving back to the community both in her role as an educator um after the Olympics and um with her um family's business of really ensuring that we can get access to kids for, you know, Vermont's famous pastime, winter pastime. So it was really an inspiring event. We're putting together um some of the um the reflections that we found to be really profound as part of um our review moving forward. So I think we also noticed that, you know, as we're developing this vision for being the best education system in the country where we're giving all kids roots and wings. There is some challenges that we are facing. And so we talked at the beginning of this meeting around some of the real mental health challenges that our students are facing, some of the potential dangers around AI and just the recognition that there's always a lot of technological changes. And so how do we make sure that we continue to keep our students both grounded and ready for that the future? It's an enduring question that we need to keep coming back to um as we are prioritizing our work. We also reflected that, you know, this is a really critical moment in education um in our country. Uh, we have seen nationally a decline in academic performance. And Vermont has been making national headlines for being part of the New England nosedive as we're looking at our results um compared to other states. And so, you know, we started to talk a lot about, and we'll continue this conversation, all of the factors that contribute to that. We understand that education does not happen in a vacuum. There's a lot of other factors that contribute to a student's ability to learn and to thrive in our schools and in our classrooms. And so we've noted some of those factors, um including poverty, the rise of mental health issues, noting that the pandemic also has exacerbated many of the inequities and challenges. We know that social media has changed the way that students are learning and engaging with each other. And overall, you know, I think everyone could identify a couple of other factors that might be contributing to a student's ability uh to meet their their full potential. But what we challenged ourselves to do is really recognizing that all states across the country are facing these very same challenges. We are in a position to really shift from analyzing the challenges into action. So instead of asking ourselves, why is this happening? The real question before us and the one that parents and students are asking us to answer is how will we respond? And that's the work that we're doing together and being really clear around what the challenges are, naming those and developing a strategy um together collectively so that we can address the challenges before us and create um opportunities for students to be very successful. So within the agency of our overall strategic planning process, we've been using a framework of defining what we are tight on and defining what we're loose on. And you've heard me mention that um in previous um board meetings. We're really striving for the right balance. We want to be tight on those areas where we have the statewide priorities. We want to make sure in those areas as an agency, we're providing clarity of direction. We have accountability in place, and we've also reorganized our entire agency to meet the biggest educational priorities of the field. And then in areas where we are loose is where we want to make sure that um there's the room and the space to exercise educator creativity. And in those areas, ensure that there's the ability to customize for the local context and to pilot and learn from innovation. Um, so this is a framework we'll continue to go back to as we're developing our strategic plan to ensure that we're focusing in on the areas that are most impactful and providing um resources, training, support in those areas um to really help um further our goals. This is also closely aligned with our motto of Vermont as we think about unity and freedom. And I think that's helpful to have that natural tension uh to always um seek for the balance. Um, and so really, our strategic plan is talking about what what areas are we going to be tight on. We are taking a holistic, um whole child approach as we are developing our strategy, and that's really building upon the values of Vermont. So we've organized our strategic plan into five pillars. Academic excellence, college and career readiness, safe and healthy schools, operational effectiveness, special education, and differentiated support for all learners. And as I mentioned at the um top of the meeting, when I was orienting you to the resources online, we've already launched several initiatives within these pillars, recognizing that there is a need to provide direct support now to our districts and our schools and our teachers in these critical areas. So under academic excellence, we have launched Reed Vermont, um which is designed to promote literacy outcomes statewide. We have reinvigorated our focus on Reed Vermont in the last couple of months and by launching their Reed Vermont Institute and also identifying funding that can be sustained um beyond this year. So we're we're really proud to be able to continue that work moving forward. We're also piloting a math initiative. We are looking forward to learning from that initiative so that we can scale and provide direction across Vermont to ensure that we can increase um math outcomes statewide. Within college and career readiness, we're doing a lot of work um around the statewide graduation requirements. You'll hear later today from Erin Davis to give you an update on where we are in our work plan um to bring forward to you those recommendations. But we do see this as one important component of preparing our students um for the success beyond high school. Within safe and healthy schools, uh, we have launched a a campaign to reduce chronic absenteeism called Everyday Counts. We hosted a conference um earlier this week in partnership with University of Vermont um to that effort. Additionally, uh, we've put a lot of focus and emphasis on providing a model policy and prevention related to hazing, harassment and bullying so that some additional work we'll bring forward to you at the board um in subsequent meetings. Related to operational effectiveness, we know that data is central to that work, and we've been really consistent about improving our data collection, data verification, and enhancing analysis and reporting. Uh, that work is continuing and uh we're really excited to bring together educators for a working group as we're looking to prioritize certain reports and analysis to support decision making at every level. And then within the fifth pillar, as we look at special education and differentiated support for all learners, we are focusing in on Act one seventy-three implementation. The Act one seventy-three was passed in two thousand and eighteen. And as we've done our review um with our most recent report of current uh the current state of special education, we've recognized that there has been variability with implementation of the best practices enumerated in Act one seventy-three. But what we really came to a consensus on in partnership with special education directors, curriculum directors, leaders across the state is that those best practices are the right best practices. And what we need to focus in on is how we will implement and support in the those best practices in every district and every classroom so that we are improving the quality of general instruction and ensuring that every child has access to the interventions that they need regardless of whether or not that child has an individualized education plan. So we are partnering, we will be partnering with a national expert. Um, we are in the process of finalizing um our our select RFP selection process to support us in that work. Part of that effort will also evaluate the capacity needs both of the agency and the state and ensuring that we have the appropriate training and monitoring tools um to elevate academic outcomes. So within the planning retreat itself, we had a number of different breakout sessions. So within the planning retreat itself, we had a number of different breakout sessions that were facilitated by agency leaders. They spanned the range of content areas, as we would expect, and were really reflective of the work that we're focusing on within these five strategic pillars. Those participants that opted to focus in on statewide graduation requirements were part of a full day pathway. And so they were able to really dive deep into these recommendations and wrestle with some of the choices before us as we are making that recommendation to you. And then other participants selected among a different track and were able to participate in three different sessions. Their choices included education workforce development. We had a roundtable to really talk about how we need to rethink some of the standards to align with the changing and elevated standards from the student perspective. We had a working session focused on enhancing accountability and reporting, reimagining personalized learning plans, providing input on the special education strategic plan, also looking at statewide system planning and business operations considerations as we think about larger districts and also creating greater efficiencies. We received input on the work we're doing around hazing, harassment, and bullying, both for the model policy and the prevention toolkit. And we had a session focused on how we can help to create that vision alignment around roots and wings. And what does that look like when we're really, as a state, all rowing in the same direction and aligned around our vision? So our next steps, we will be publishing a report where we will capture the major takeaways from each of the breakout sessions and identify the immediate next steps. We also are establishing steering committees for each of the five strategic pillars. Those steering committees will begin meeting in January through April, and they will be charged with providing further refinement and input around our vision, really getting clear on how we will measure our targets over the next three years to ensure we can achieve our goals and to give feedback on the work around our strategies and the implementation considerations on the big work that we're looking to move forward. We were creating additional opportunities for students and educators to engage with our visioning process because we really want to collect input around how this concept of roots and wings resonates and how that manifests currently in our schools and where there's opportunities to grow aspirationally in order to deliver on that vision for every student in Vermont. And then as we move forward, we are looking for this event to be an annual event. And subsequent events, we'll really be talking about, here's what we established as our goals. And let's be honest about where we are. Let's celebrate the progress that we're making as a state and then also identify where there's some areas where we may need to make some alignment so that we can focus in those sessions to make some of the adjustments where we can achieve our intended goals. So that's a little bit about our statewide planning retreat. It really was a wonderful session. We learned a tremendous amount and appreciated the opportunity to bring our educators from across the state together in one place to roll up our sleeves and really plan around how we can achieve our shared goals. So any questions about the planning retreat? Yes?
Thanks. Thanks, Secretary Saunders. Can you say a word or two about literacy and where things are in the sort of, you know, in the process? You know, the money that we invested a while ago, and I've kind of lost track of it a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
So we've highlighted that literacy has been a priority focus for us. Really appreciate the General Assembly passing Act 139 to really ensure that we are taking a focus statewide in ensuring early literacy outcomes for all of our students. We launched Read Vermont, and as you know, we were using some of the remaining ESER dollars at that time. And so there was some instability with that funding and did create a pause in implementation. We took that pause to take stock of what's working well in the program and what we need to refine. And also, we're really intentional about identifying a more, a stable and sustainable funding source. And so with that, we've actually been able to increase the level of support that we're providing. We just launched the Read Vermont Institute, which has been refined based on our learning from the first phase of implementation to provide more targeted support and coaching in the field around literacy. So we're, we continue to stay focused on that. Our most recent state assessment results showed relative stability in terms of performance, but where we did see some improvement was in fourth and fifth grade for English language arts. So we are also looking more closely at that data and identifying where we've seen some tremendous gains in certain schools and districts so that we can learn from that and also incorporate that into our planning and support that we're providing to districts across the state. But I'll also allow Erin, if you want to weigh in, in expanding upon the work we're doing with Read Vermont. I give you the floor.
Sure. Yeah, I would highlight one thing about the shift, you know, like Secretary Saunders said. We kind of evaluated what the previous strategy was in terms of support directed at schools. And we made a pivot with the Read Vermont Institute approach that we're launching in December now. We're no longer directing the coaching support to specific teachers in specific schools. We're using a multi-pronged approach to make sure that there is a track for learning for literacy teachers and an accompanying track for learning for their school leaders. We know based on the research that the impact is greater when the school leader's learning is brought alongside their teachers. The other pivot that I would highlight to the approach that we're taking with this is a cohort approach. So rather than there being myriad schools that are participating that have set their own goals and define their own needs around it, we know there are some common shared needs when we're seeking to improve literacy instruction. And so the schools that are participating will be part of a cohort where they'll be able to benefit from shared learning together, again, on those two tracks that I mentioned, teacher and leader, and some shared across the two, and then get cycles of coaching support back at their schools before they reconvene together for the next set of shared learning and another cycle of supported implementation.
Sustainability was a key focus for us. And so we needed to make sure that there was that multi-pronged support and also building the culture and the infrastructure needed to be able to implement these practices. Erin, could you also speak to the work that we're doing internally at the agency around training and capacity building for our own team to provide this support in the field?
We've been engaging in recurring trainings that have pulled staff members across many different parts of our organization, including our licensing division, our curriculum and instruction division, our adult education, career tech divisions, our teams. And then special education, of course, has been involved. I feel like I'm forgetting some folks because it's been such a wonderful cross-sectional representation of the agency that have been participating. And folks have really been able to make connections to the need to improve literacy and the learning that they're engaging in around what literacy instruction should look like to their discrete areas of focus. After-school opportunities is another team member that's been joining that as well that just came to mind for me. So we're continuing that internal learning. And the way that we've established the Read Vermont Institute with the cohort model and the multiple tracks is also set up so that additional members of our teams can learn alongside the vendor partner who's providing this so that we'll be positioned to continue that and scale it even bigger using additional members of our team and not just have an ongoing dependency on an outside vendor, for example. So we're doing the learning internally ourselves as lead learners, and we will be learning alongside them with this institute model, cohort model, so that we'll be able to continue it and scale it as we move forward.
And the last piece I would ask you to expand on, Erin, is we've talked a lot about early literacy related to Act 139, but our focus is on all learners. Can you just touch on the way that we're supporting our adolescent striving readers?
Yep, absolutely. So we continue with our partnership with, it was actually just on Monday, we had a great event with UVM where we had had a fantastic turnout. I was really impressed. I want to say there were around 100 people, if not more, in the room, where we brought in a guest speaker, Dr. Claude Goldenberg, who was sharing a little bit about the science of reading and particularly the way that it relates to our multilingual learners. He addressed a number of questions from the audience as well around how to meet the needs of our adolescent learners, especially if they come in as not fluent in English. So it continues to be an area of focus for us. We know that more support is necessary, not only for closing gaps for students that have been with us since the earliest years, you know, in pre-K and early education in schools, but also for students who enter our schools at later grades and have literacy gaps that may be compounded by additional needs, whether they're disabilities or multilingual learning needs.
Great. If I could just follow up quickly. I remember when we took testimony on this issue in Senate Ed a few years ago, there was the question of, or the concern that teachers within our state colleges were not, you know, who are going through this teacher training program. Some had come in and said, listen, I didn't get that kind of training around literacy. And I'm wondering if that, if there's a focus on that. And then just secondly, is there a point person for Read Vermont Initiative? And that's it.
Yes. So as we speak, we are working with the Vermont Standards Board. So they're meeting in parallel with your meeting. And we are providing an update on the process by which we have evaluated the current support in our teacher prep programs for the science of reading and how we are crafting our recommendations. In January, we will bring forward at their next board meeting our recommendations for how to strengthen instructional practices in our education prep programs to best prepare our teachers to enter our schools equipped with an understanding of the science of reading and the practices that will really help them to prepare students so that they can develop the foundational literacy skills that we know are so critical for the student to be successful. So we will share that when we bring it forward to the standards board. We'll also bring it to you all as the state board so that you have visibility to the recommendations we're making in that area. But you raise a really important point. And I think it showed a lot of wisdom of the legislature to also contemplate the recommendations for the educator prep programs because that's really critical to our work. Erin, anything you want to expand on that? The timing of it's a perfect question, so.
And then it was just, is there, is there somebody that is actually the leader of Read Vermont Initiative? Or is that something that you're all kind of sharing in-house? If there's like specific follow-up questions that any of us might have?
Emily Lesh on our team is playing a point for Read Vermont. And we also, as Erin was describing, there is a larger team that's coordinating with her that is a cross-section of curriculum and instruction, special education, career and technical. But Emily Lesh is playing the lead for us.
Great. Thanks so much. I appreciate the update, and I respect the pivot towards sustainability. I can see, it makes sense from my experience working on this. So thank you both.
Thank you.
I see that Mohammed dropped in the chat of great resource around literacy. And maybe just if we could have that link included in our minutes, I think that would be helpful. I'm also remembering, Mohammed, you had raised the issue about adolescent English language learners and how they need resources that are different than what we think about as emerging readers who might be, you know, four, five, six, you know, that they have different needs and different interests and how to support them as well. So I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that the agency is really taking that to heart and coming up with a well-rounded way to reach all learners wherever they are.
Absolutely.
Very true. Samuelson, thank you for mentioning that. And I'm very appreciative about the work being done around this as well. And I'm mentioning Sarah Lupo here because I have attended sessions presented by her several times right here in Vermont. And I'm just recommending her really for anyone who improved their literacy skills. She's amazing. And as for immigrants and refugees, often what is, what I encourage us all to mind, to be mindful of is that their parents may not be educated, but they are fully engaged in their education. It's our job as educators to provide them the resources to support their kids or our students who are at home. So the learning can be a continuous cycle rather than just having it stop at school. So parents' engagement is a key to that as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate that you're bringing that up. We are very focused on that and ensuring that we provide the parent and caregiver resources as well to support their child's reading development. Thank you for that point. Any other questions around the planning retreat or even specific initiatives that we've rolled out? It would be helpful for me to learn what you would like to review further. We can bring it to a subsequent meeting so we can have a deeper dive and giving you an update on some of these initiatives that we've launched and are supporting statewide.
Well, board members are thinking about specific areas that they might like to recommend for you to do a deeper dive on. I'm curious because I know that those workshops that you hosted received a lot of, I mean, you solicited a lot of feedback. And so I'm thinking about the special ed where you had, you know, the, it reminded me of the rules of professional responsibility where you had like the rule, and then you had the objective, and then you had comments with examples. And for those who didn't go to the retreat, they had blown them up on enormous pieces of paper and held that workshop twice and had everyone in the room at each workshop rotate around to each table where the model rule was written and then solicited comments. And I know that, you know, when I was there, there were a lot of comments written on those pieces of paper. So I'm curious how, like, what is your approach to processing all of that feedback? Because there's a lot, and I can imagine that that's a rather ambitious charge in front of you.
Yes. So we were really intentional in the design of this workshop of identifying for each breakout session what our learning objectives were and then being explicit with the participants around how we would be using that input to drive our next steps. And so our notes are organized in that way. And we're right now compiling that into a report that we will publish. So for each of the sessions, we are bringing forward the major themes that came through on the discussion, the areas that we may need to have further inquiry, and some immediate next steps. And so for some of the planning sessions, we already have vehicles in place to support the advancement of that work. For example, as you referenced special education, we have a committee that is working with us to help synthesize and make sense of the different findings and input we're receiving as we are developing a targeted plan forward. We also work very closely with the SEEP. So, you know, in addition to publishing this in a report, we're bringing forward the data and the information in these planning groups to support next steps and really helping to contextualize the data, make meaning of it so that we can use that information to drive and support responsible decision-making. In other instances, we may not have a built-in committee to support us with reviewing that work. And in those cases, you'll see in the report that we are actually soliciting some input for a working group. So for example, I mentioned earlier, I facilitated a session around accountability and reporting. And I'll be bringing together a working group to help prioritize how we will, you know, push out different analytics and tools and resources to support decision-making. But the long story is, yes, we collected a tremendous amount of feedback. And we were really clear around collecting feedback in a way that we could show how we were using that information. That's what you'll see in the report that we're compiling right now to bring together all of that data and information. Because every session, I know you went to three different ones. Every session, there were a tremendous amount of input that we captured. And we're really using that information. We'll be reflecting it back in the report and then actually referencing it to guide our next steps in the planning.
Well, and I will say too, I'm reflecting that I think one of the complaints about the agency in prior years sort of historically, has been that it has not really been engaged with the field. And that there's kind of been this disconnect between what the agency is doing and, and what SEAs, LEAs are doing, LEA, sorry. And what I loved about those workshops is that you really brought in the people who are most affected by these changes that you're proposing. And both getting, you know, buy-in and, and, you know, really helpful input, but also, you know, nothing like someone who is actually putting these things into practice to be able to say, oh, you know, I would tweak this a little bit because you want to capture, you know, this. And so I, I thought it was a really nice way that you set that up, that it really allowed people to provide that direct feedback to the agency because these are regulations that are then going to be, you know, put into place. So I thought that was really helpful.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. I appreciate that feedback. So look for the report. We will, for those of you who did not participate, or I know that schedules are really challenging to be able to go to a full day retreat. So completely understand and want to make sure that you have this as a resource. So in the interim, certainly on our website, you can find more information around how we've organized it, how we're structuring the strategic plan framework. And then in the coming weeks, we'll share a detailed report. So you will have the ability to look at what was presented and the feedback that we collected along with how we're using that feedback to guide next steps. So more information to come. And just to conclude, my secretary's update. If there, are there further questions around the retreat? Just wanted to note two more things to conclude my remarks. Earlier in the discussion today, we talked about AI. So I just wanted to make mention that it is an area of focus for us at the Agency of Education. Aaron and I are participating in an AI cohort with other education leaders from across the country to really understand how we can responsibly leverage AI and ensure that we have the appropriate guardrails in place. The agency will be providing guidance documents to the field. We're first collecting some additional input from the field in a draft guidance document that we have prepared. So wanted you to be aware that we recognize the importance of having strong leadership around AI, given some of the, the, the challenges and the risks, but also how we can leverage the opportunities to accelerate learning opportunities, to help resource teachers to really implement personalized learning consistently in ways that are really meaningful and impactful to the student. So just wanted you to be aware that that is a, a focus for us. You'll see more information coming from the agency in this arena. And, and we do understand it's really important for states to take a leadership role around how we are navigating AI in education. So I'll, I'll provide an update as we move forward. And then the last piece that I just wanted to make mention of, but won't have a lot of time to talk about today. You probably have seen in the news that there's been shifts with the Trump administration and their efforts to return education to the state. So the, we all state chiefs received an announcement yesterday that most of the K-12 programs are moving from outs, out of US Ed into other agencies at the federal level. And so they're doing that through six inter-agency partnerships. This announcement came yesterday. Certainly, we are monitoring what the implications can be in terms of access to support and grants and a variety of considerations. I don't have any additional updates to share today, but I did just want you to have visibility. And we'll forward the announcement to you so that you have that as background. And then in the subsequent meeting, I, I can share a little bit more about what that will look like in practice and some, you know, impacts potentially to how we work with the federal government. That will conclude my remarks. Any questions for me?
Mohammed.
Mohammed.
I have a question. This is about school fundings. And I just sense from my conversation with multiple educators from different schools, that it feels a little bit late for once schools know about whether we will be receiving federal funds or not. Not up, not until April, from what I learned. And every school right now, as we speak, are already working on their budget for the next school year. So it makes it very challenging for school districts really to wait until that long to know whether we are receiving all the titles. Let's say Title I, II, and III. So we won't know for sure until maybe mid-April or even later than that. It's, it is very challenging for folks in the field to budget properly. And many staff members get confused about whether their role will still continue. And some, because of the uncertainties, start even looking for other jobs just because, because of not feeling secured where they are. So I just want to bring this up. And maybe you can all think of maybe alternatives of better ways to reassure folks in the field earlier as possible, rather than really having everyone to live this roller coaster for three, four months without knowing for sure.
Just to be clear, that at the state level, we, we don't control that roller coaster, right? That's at, at the federal level. However, what we are doing is providing regular updates through our superintendent's communication that is reflecting kind of our, our current understanding of the decisions that are being reviewed. And additionally, we have provided some guidance around how to be strategic as you're doing your budgeting right now and potential contingency planning. Should certain funding sources that are more vulnerable be impacted? And the agency is, is committed to continuing to provide those regular updates. And also will be sharing some additional guidance and considerations for districts right now. Because to your point, they are in the throes of, of budgeting. And so this federal uncertainty has certainly created new challenges, which you are highlighting and we're recognizing. And our strategy has been to provide really clear, consistent, frequent updates. We work with our national partners such as CCSSO and also our delegation as well to stay current on, on what is happening in, in Washington and then making sure to communicate that to districts.
Thank you for working with those stakeholders to get, to get us updated. Everybody's anxious out there. Thank you.
And our, our team's also in some additional training around how to maximize all of the federal funds and really reviewing those allowable expenses to ensure that those dollars are being leveraged in ways that are most strategic to the school. That actually is part of an intentional reason why we did our reorganization, to provide that additional support as we're thinking about the, the grants management piece of really leveraging all of those dollars and, and being as, as strategic and intentional as possible with how those, those funds can support student, student opportunities and outcomes. So thank you for, for bringing that context.
You're welcome. And thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Zoe or Aaron? All right. Thank you both. That was a really helpful update. Agency is embarking on a lot of work and a lot of different directions, but really appreciate everything that you all are doing.
Thank you.
So board members, at this point, we are scheduled for a break. However, if everyone has the appetite to hang in for a few more minutes. Tom, as we know, is a teacher and he's got a class that starts at 10:30 that he needs to just get settled before he comes back into our meeting. The next item on our agenda is to take up the request for approval by the National Institute of Funeral Services. And I do believe they're already with us. What I would like to propose, if, if this is okay with the rest of the board, is that we pick up this agenda item first, then do the break and then come back at 10:35 to meet with Aaron again about statewide graduation requirements. But does that work for everyone if we do the school approval now? Great. Well, with no further ado, Tom, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you. And thanks, everybody, for being so flexible. Just a little bit of a background. This is a different kind of approval than you've heard from this committee before. I'll be ending this report by making a motion that we do grant approval to the National Institute of Funeral Services to be certified to offer an Associate Applied Science Degree of Funeral Service in Vermont for a period of three years. This part of Rule 2200 is really rules 2240 through 2250. Specifically, we looked at Rule 2243. These rules, when they were, when they were drafted, when they were put in place, were mostly for consumer protection for higher education. The state board will get, we get a report from the Vermont Higher Education Council. And they send in a team to Institutes of Higher Education to make sure that everything is set. They have a, they receive a self-study. They do a site visit, very much like a NEASC accreditation or an AESNI accreditation, if you're familiar with those processes. The Associate of Applied Science Funeral Service is, will be a two-year program. The, this school also is seeking accreditation from the American Board of Funeral Services Education, which is important to know because it takes two years to get accredited. So that's why our recommendation will be three years at the end of this. So a little bit about the, the institute. It's a single-purpose institution, only one economic sector. There's no other school like it in Vermont and is only asking for approval in Vermont, not regional approval. And everybody who was on the call expressly, we're lucky to have this. We would be lucky to have this school in Vermont. There's a dearth of schools like it in the country. The standards by which VHEC does its evaluation, very similar to NEASC standards. If you read the report, the initial self-study was weak in that it conflated some of those standards. But when the team went to the site visit and then visited with the team that's in place, they left more impressed than they thought they would and realized that the self-study was written with very little guidance because this school doesn't exist yet. And that's, that's a rare occurrence that a school would write a self-study before it actually existed and was up and running. But the team that they have is very experienced, very strong. And the term that the team from VHEC used was that even though the school wasn't up and running and couldn't say with examples how things were going, they had given adequate consideration to all the things that they would need to provide to get up and running. One of the biggest concerns that we had, even though there's a market, if there's a need in the market, in the industry for a school like this, would there be students? And there are six in the pipeline. They need three to, to make ends meet. Their goal is 10 with possible expansion. But there are six that are waiting for this certification to happen. Their facility in Rutland can't expand if they get, if they get more students. Their staff is part-time. The director can only work 40% of the time. And the way that funeral services schools operate throughout the country is that funeral directors on their day off will come in and run classes. They are suggesting a very flexible programming, both in-person at the Rutland site, online, both synchronous and asynchronous. The, every student will have to go to the Rutland site for some, or some onsite training in embalming. So 10, they have to do 10 of those. And then some cosmetic work too has to be onsite that can't be done online. They have priced themselves lower than the competition. Most students now go to either Texas or Manhattan, both of which are considerably more expensive than this Vermont school will be. And so we were, we were impressed after we talked both to the VHEC team and to the school that they are, they are in fact ready to launch in the, in a January semester for their first semester. And that the approval that, after, the approval will only start in their first semester of enrollment, which we suspect if things go well today, will be in January. So all of that, all that said, I'd like to make the motion that the State Board of Education approves the National Institute of Funeral Services to be certified to offer an Associate of Applied Science Degree of Funeral Service in Vermont for an initial period of three years, commencing with this first semester of enrollment.
I'll second that motion.
Booed by Tom. Seconded by Rich. I have a comment and a question, but anyone else? So my comment is, I'm just acknowledging the work of the committee to get, and the agency, but the, the committee to get this school on today's agenda. Our 2200 approvals committee is one of those committee that kind of has a standing monthly meeting that has been set up so that it's, you know, always like the same day of the month at the same time, so that committee members can kind of count on a meeting happening or not at that particular date and time. And I know that there was a little bit of a hiccup this month. The scheduled meeting was canceled and then you guys kind of had to scramble to meet in time to bring the school forward to today. So I just, I want to thank the committee for your flexibility with that. And just, and I, I spoke with Zoe about this and understanding that the school is trying to get up and running in time for January, pushing the school off until December would not have allowed them to do that. So I do appreciate everyone's accommodation to get us where we are today. So thank you. And then my question, really just, you know, point of curiosity. Is the school only focused on embalming? Or are there other, other services provided?
Yeah. So I don't know the full program, but I know that there would be, there would be a grief counseling, for example. And I know the other onsite requirement is they need to know how to, specifically, they need to know how to make a nose and an ear. So it's the, the cosmetics that go along with, with funeral services. I think there is also, I'd imagine, courses in how to conduct funeral services and so forth. So I don't know the, the full extent, but I do know those.
But, but not cremation and not like alternative burial services? Or this is more like a traditional?
No, I would imagine, I don't know this, but I'm imagining it's funeral services. I, it's, it's, yeah, soup to nuts, right?
Okay. Thanks.
I just comment quick. It does incorporate learning, each one of those. So they would learn about cremation, they'd learn about burial, they would learn about aqua cremation. So it would all be encompassed in there. And it's a full funeral service degree. So they, of course, the, the main part is they have to know how to embalm, but they'll also learn how to make arrangements. Every type of religion, they would be dealing with grief courses, the history, ethics, things like that.
So I guess, thank you for that. My other comment was, I, I did notice in reading the report that at least right now, the school is going to be very reliant on the instructors and administrators being volunteer, which, you know, tells me two things. I mean, one is, I hope that eventually this model is going to grow so that that's not the permanent model. But also, it really says a lot about the commitment for the organization to put this in place. And it seemed clear to me from the report that a lot of research had gone into this. It, it seemed very thoughtful in the approach.
I agree.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions, either for Tom or for the school itself? Mohammed?
Yeah. Thank you, Tracy, for all the work. And Tom, of course, and everyone involved for making this happen. It's very interesting. I ran into a student who was interested in this particular topic. Being a high school student, I actually, for the first time, I was really, really surprised that a high schooler was interested in bombing. I'm like, oh, okay, I'm going to connect you with our flexible pathway coordinator. So home started to. So home started to connect this individual student with churches around, with funeral homes. And that is here in Winuski, children area. So you guys are all the way in Rutland. I'm just curious on how you can expand this to other institutions. I understand you do things online and like asynchronous. But I'm just a little bit, as we think of career readiness, as we think of our students having skills, having been in Vermont for really a while now, I'm feeling sad that churches are most of the time empty, although they are so very beautifully built. And these are things in some other countries, people would learn from churches. But here in the U.S., without such service being provided with such wonderful group, it's very unique. So I'm just curious on how you intend to expand this across Vermont, really for its accessibility, it's needed. Somebody has to be there to bury somebody or to know how to deal with a dead body. It's very important. Thank you for your deal with that.
Yeah, we, we hopefully, you know, once we are up and going, we're trying to expand to more high school-type students. The average age of a funeral directing student is about 35 across the national average. So we would like it to be where we could expand to different satellites in Vermont and accomplish, you know, different areas where we could get a younger population and keep the, you know, the funeral homes open. Across the U.S., we're about 26 to 28% short of funeral directors. So there's a definite demand, and it's very high-paying for an associate's degree. So we're hoping, you know, through guidance councils, college fairs, things like that, that we'll have a receptive audience and be able to expand to all different locations in Vermont.
Thank you, Tracy.
Other board member comments or questions? Hearing none, are we ready for a vote?
I'm sure, I'm sorry, this is Tim Donovan. I was the chair of the team. Could I just address Mohammed's question kind of in context, in a Vermont context, if you will? Two, two things. One is, having been a, a, an educator in, a post-secondary educator in Vermont for 40 years, one of the, one of the just characteristics of this state is that it's difficult to aggregate a market big enough to do some things that would, in an urban area, have no difficulty being aggregated. And so that takes creativity. Quite frankly, the ability to do things at a distance with, 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 with online has, if it's done well, has really allowed institutions to define markets less geographically and more on a, on a programmatic basis. The second thing is, is something that you actually mentioned, Mohammed, which is the flexible pathways. And, and the, and the, the philosophy behind that legislation originally was that your education can come from many places and be just as legitimate as having come from the traditional place. I think that applies here as well. If you dive into this program a bit, what you'll discover is that there's a really, in, 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 a, a, a large amount of potential for, for this instruction taking place in local funeral homes. So a student from Winuski would do much of their work. Probably their embalming work would be done at a local funeral home. So you're utilizing the resources in a community, which strengthens those resources and makes the program viable. So just a little context from a Vermont, a Vermont policy standpoint.
I appreciate you, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing further, we've heard the motion as read by Tom. It's been seconded by Rich. And at this point, if there are no further questions, I will say, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? All right, we have approved the school. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
So at this point, we are going to take a break. I think just to kind of keep things simple, this will be a slightly longer break. But if everyone could come back even slightly before 10:35 so that we can pick up with Aaron at 10:35, that would be great. Thank you.
You all right, buddy?
Did we lose some people?
Well, Tom had to start a class and then he'll be back. Tammy had to jump off for a phone call or something and said she'll be back at 10:40. So I think if Mohammed comes back, we can go ahead and resume.
Well, we don't have to vote on anything, do we? So we could, we could just start to keep us on track and respect the?
And Mohammed's back.
Oh, so. Don't have to worry about it.
We're all good. All right, we are back. So next up on our agenda is a discussion about statewide graduation requirements. And we've got Erin Davis, who is the Chief Academic Officer from the Agency with us again. So welcome back, Erin.
Thank you. Excited to provide you all with an update, specifically focusing on our stakeholder feedback. You can see my screen big enough?
Yes.
All right, well, let's jump in. So the first two slides are going to be just kind of reminders and overviews. I'll do them fairly quickly, but I still think it's helpful for us to ground ourselves in what is, what we're tasked with from Act 73. So the Agency of Education will be submitting a report to the State Board of Education around statewide graduation requirement recommendations. We will be getting that to you in the month of December, so coming up soon. And of course, this provides a really meaningful opportunity for us to set the standard of excellence for graduates throughout Vermont so that a Vermont diploma means the same thing regardless of where a student completed their education within the state. We also see this as an opportunity to create more equity and to increase the consistency of rigor across the state. And by defining the finish line really clearly, this really allows us to strengthen the whole system, pre-K through 12. Because if everyone's moving toward the same requirements at the end of the finish line there, then we know that there's work that can be done to strengthen the entire vertical spine, as we would call it. And just as a reminder that we are aligning to the Vermont Portrait of a Graduate as a starting place, we know that it's important to backward plan from that bigger picture finish line as we consider what the specific graduation requirements would be and the overall goal being that we're setting Vermont graduates up for success in college and our career and to be actively engaged citizens, of course. The timeline of the events are also specified by Act 73 for us, specifically that the report is due in December of '25 and then the implementation that moves forward beyond that. And so just the first few phases here are activities that the agency engaged in. So beginning in August and kind of trying to start closing out by September, we did a really thorough analysis of what's currently happening across the state of Vermont in terms of graduation requirements. And we also looked outside the state to see what other states were using as their graduation requirements. In some cases, to say, oh, that's maybe a model that doesn't feel like it would fit with the values here in Vermont and not one we would consider. Or, you know, to get some additional ideas of, of things and ways that we might approach it. Phase two is what we've been in the midst of, which is stakeholder engagement. At the end of phase one, we came up with two different models to use for stakeholders to react to. We tried to be very clear in the framing that neither of the models would necessarily be one that we recommended to you all at the State Board, but that they were designed intentionally based on some early stakeholder feedback and the research that we had done to help folks kind of consider what some options could be and respond to them because we know that that's a helpful way to elicit feedback from folks. And in a moment here, I'll give you an outline of more detail of all the different folks that we've had the pleasure of engaging with through this process. Of course, a big part of that was our statewide planning retreat that happened a couple of weeks ago. Following that, we invited folks to complete a survey. And most of what my presentation is today, we'll be providing you with some updates with analysis that we've done of the survey results already. We're moving quickly into needing to draft our report, incorporate our research, embed the feedback that we're getting from the field and make our recommendations. We do intend to include in our report to the State Board some areas of further inquiry that we've identified as well as a work plan that we're suggesting for how we could provide ongoing support to you all through your decision-making process. So those will also be components of the report. And then you all will enter your decision-making process phase where you have until the end of June in 2027 to finalize your decision. But I know from having interacted with you all prior that you understand the implications and the need to hopefully make the decision sooner than that because of the impact that it'll have on budgets, on full-time employee counts, on master calendars, schedules for schools, because this does go into effect for the entering ninth graders in the '27, '28 school year. It'll be a four-year phase in. Those students will be the first graduating class of 2031 that'll be required to meet the statewide graduation requirements. And so we are moving pretty quickly with our recommendations to make sure that we're giving you the information that you need to begin your process. So on the left here, you see a table with the analysis that we did within the state of Vermont. So across our SUs and STs, the current graduation requirements as they are publicly posted, you can see here how they map out against each of the different content areas. But then also just a really significant range in terms of what's being required of students in order to receive their diploma in the total number of credits. It ranges from 16.5 to 28.5 across our state currently. As we dug deeper into that, we noticed that not only is there variation and inconsistency in the number, the total number of specific requirements or the content requirements, but actually, there's quite a bit of inconsistency in whether the, each supervisory union in school districts' current proficiency-based graduation requirements address transferable skills, the content standards that have already been approved by the board, or both, a combination of both. And that leads to even greater inconsistency than just what's reflected on the table. And then lastly, I wanted to call our attention to the fact that the U.S. Department of Education did the monitoring visit, that's how we mentioned earlier, to Vermont, and found that there was uneven rigor across the flexible pathways, programs, and graduation requirements in the state. So we know that this is an area that we, we need to address and could benefit from some statewide expectations. So I created this graphic on the left to try to help us conceptualize where this fits in the bigger picture of each student's learning experience. So we know that each of these components, starting with the portrait of a learner or portrait of a graduate, that is the most holistic representation of the educational experiences we want for our students, then can be pulled down into specific transferable skills that we want for our students to have in order to actualize the portrait of a learner or a graduate. Those are undergirded by the content standards that are already approved and should be really, you know, intersectional with them. Those two things should be embedded in each other. In order to deliver on the content standards and transferable skills, schools make a series of decisions around what flexible pathways they make available, what coursework they're offering. And within each of those flexible pathways and the coursework offerings, there, of course, are decisions around curriculum and instruction that provides opportunities for students to practice, be assessed, and receive feedback about how they're progressing with their learning. Throughout the state of Vermont, these components have already been identified and defined as educational priorities. But the way they're being operationalized is what varies quite a bit. And we certainly know that there are examples for us to build on. The graduation requirements statewide provides us with the opportunity to strengthen the implementation of Act 77 and Act 173, among others, to make sure that by being clear and tight on what the graduation requirements are, we actually can be more innovative and focus on ways that we can use evidence-based practices for delivering on the support to all learners to allow them to achieve the overall portrait of a learner, portrait of a graduate. So the graduation requirements themselves are situated where that arrow that I just drafted is, right? Kind of in, in the middle of all of this. And we know that by defining it really clearly, it allows us to move kind of in both directions to strengthen the work that we're doing. I'm framing this in terms of an overall theory of change that by setting these statewide graduation requirements, we have the opportunity to more fully achieve and deliver on our promise to all Vermont students and create more consistency of rigor and clarity of expectations. There's a lot of benefit to that, right? Not just for the students, but also the fact that consistency in what the requirements are that they must satisfy actually allows for a lot more collaboration across the SUs and STs around the other parts of that graphic that I showed you, the flexible pathways, the personalized learning, locally-designed experiences that are available to students in order for them to graduate. We've also heard that there's a number of challenges that students face if they're moving from one SU or SD to another. And then also, within the CTE centers, that they also are experiencing kind of a rub in the fact that right now, there aren't statewide graduation requirements, and there's such variation in expectations from one sending school to another. And lastly, I just want to highlight that we know that the statewide graduation requirements alone are not what's going to single-handedly increase rigor or establish more consistency. But it is a really important first step. And it also fits more broadly into the agency's other focus areas on increasing academic leadership and support that Zoe spoke to earlier in her Secretaries of State. Okay, I'm sure you're all ready to dig into some of the data and findings. I first wanted to give you an overview of the various stakeholder groups that we've engaged in and the ways that we've engaged them. So this starts with October 2nd, moves all the way through the end of November. We actually have meetings. I have, get to join some of our CTE leaders tomorrow at Back Dead and then some of our special education leaders on Friday of ECSE. But we really have taken a very comprehensive approach to the variety of stakeholders that we've had the chance to engage with so far. At the statewide planning retreat last week, we had over 100 participants in our day-long, three-part track that was focused on the graduation requirements. So like Secretary Saunders said, we had a total of around 300 participants and a third of them chose to engage in the full day-long track with us, just focusing on this. So we started in the morning with a session, giving an overview of the work done to date. In the afternoon, we split those folks in half, and then they each swapped. So everybody got all the same sessions, but we just did it in slightly smaller groups in the afternoon. One of the breakout sessions was a panel that showed some examples of models of the way the content standard requirements would be mapped onto the graduation credits as they were being proposed in the two models we shared. The other breakout group was focused on flexible pathways as a requirement. We had a proposal for folks to kind of respond to and engage in that since we knew that that was another area where there's a lot of inconsistencies. It was a very representative group. I mean, we had superintendents, principals, CTE folks, curriculum leaders, special education, teachers, parents, students, legislators, some of our board members, as you mentioned earlier, got a chance to join us, as well as independent and therapeutic school leaders, like very, very excited that it was as representative as it was. And then our next steps coming off of that, we kind of charged them with being ambassadors, those of, of the stakeholders who were able to join us at that event, to go back to their communities and share this survey that we created really widely. We also pushed it out through the weekly field memo and the superintendent's updates. We left it open for a full 10 days. Initially, we were planning to do a week, and we heard that folks wanted even more time to socialize it more broadly, and so we extended it through last Friday. And ultimately, we ended up with a total of 382 respondents to it. So very pleased that it had as, as big of a reach as it did. In terms of the design of the survey, there were four major sections. So rather than asking folks to choose one of the two models that we were using just to give some, something for people to respond to, we instituted the approach of asking them to build their own model for graduation requirements. We also had a section where we invited them to give feedback and what the most important considerations were for how we approached this work. Then there was another section around transferable skills because that has been a specific area. because that has been a specific area that we continue to hear from stakeholders is important to explore in terms of how much of that lives as a statewide requirement versus how much of it is most important to, to remain as a local decision. And lastly, because of that other breakout session about the flexible pathways, we also included some questions related to that topic. So here's a breakdown for you. As I mentioned, it was 382 total respondents. If you add up the number on the right where I've broken it down by stakeholder group, you'll notice it doesn't total up to that. A few respondents didn't include their role. And so that's not included, but of the ones who did, this is the general breakdown. We were very pleased to see such a high number of teachers responding to it as well, especially because at the statewide retreat, our process for invitation was to ask each superintendent to invite up to five members. And so in many cases, it included a lot of their other leaders from their districts and not as many teachers. So the fact that this got out to quite a few teachers for their responses to be included was, was really valuable. So I'm going to start with an overview of the feedback that we received as it relates to the considerations and the approach. We asked folks to, on a scale of one to five, least to most, indicate how important each aspect of our approach was to them in terms of those statewide graduation requirements. You'll see, for example, a real, really high results, highest results in letter E, which is that the statewide requirements are applicable across all settings. Folks really value and feel that it's important that the requirements we set are ones that students can satisfy regardless of what their pathway to graduation is. Similarly, I think there's some, some feedback around the need to be intentional around our decisions about what lives at a statewide decision versus what remains at the local control. Probably not surprising to any of us on this call. And then we actually are a little bit surprised in the feedback in a couple of areas that were scored more lowly. So allowing some graduation requirements to be satisfied before ninth grade, that would be things like if a student took Algebra I in eighth grade, allowing that to count. Overall, the feedback was kind of lukewarm, middle of the road around that. Similar feedback around the need for interdisciplinary instructional models wasn't quite as high as we were expecting it based on some of the stakeholder meetings that we had had previously. And then finally, a little bit surprised that there weren't, wasn't more interest around the options for adding additional seals just because that does feel something, like something that would be really aligned to the Vermont approach to education to acknowledge the specific areas of interest that students had explored more fully and have that be recognized on their diploma. So that's something that we're certainly taking into consideration as well. Okay, so this is from the build-your-own-model portion of the survey. Essentially, each respondent was invited to build their own model. They could type in the content area and then type in the number of credits that they felt were appropriate for each of the content areas they were identifying. So it wasn't pre-populated. They typed each of these in themselves. We were defining a credit as the equivalent of a year-long course or similar learning experience, but we were doing that through the same definition as what's already in the EQS, that we don't mean a specified amount of seat time with that. So overall, 293 of our respondents chose to build their own model. On average, the total number of credits that they built their models with came out to 24 of them. I included percentages for you here so that you can kind of get a sense of which content areas had the most interest and were included in the most models respondents built. And so you can see there where it kind of reflects what we saw on the last slide, a little bit of a mixed opinion on interdisciplinary core electives being pulled out separately as opposed to defining more concretely which content areas we felt like needed to be included in the statewide requirement. And that, of course, would not preclude schools from taking a highly interdisciplinary approach to how they delivered on those credit requirements. But yeah, I mean, pretty excited to see the feedback from folks, particularly personally to see that the arts were increased a little bit. Many systems are only requiring one credit of art or they're embedding it in the other electives. When we looked across the country, actually, Utah was the only state that required more than one credit in art. They like this required 1.5. So I think it speaks to the value that Vermonters have and, and the importance of arts being part of a well-rounded education. Two others that I would call your attention to are world languages and our stakeholder engagements. We heard loud and clear the challenges around staffing for that. And yet, this shows us that folks really value all students having the opportunity to engage in learning around world languages, since 73% of the folks included that in their model. Lots of interest in financial literacy becoming part of the statewide graduation requirements. And lastly, if I can highlight one other thing that stood out to me, it's the increase in the health requirement. Most frequently currently, a half credit of health is required. It's typically delivered in ninth or 10th grade. And we've been hearing, this actually kind of connects to what Caleb brought up earlier. You know, the needs around social, emotional health learning, mental health, you know, really expanding what it is that we're covering in health. Right now, we know there's more health standards there are that are approved than there is time for us to teach them. And so increasing the number of health requirements, the amount of credits required for health would be a way for us to deliver and cover more of those standards. We also invited some feedback on specific topics or coursework that, that participant or respondents felt would be important to include in our requirements for graduation. For math, Algebra I and geometry, not surprisingly, were the ones that were most frequently called out. And then there was some interesting debate that kind of aligns with the direction that math instruction has been moving more recently, away from calculus being some kind of ultimate goal at the end of the, the math track through high school and actually more of a value focused around financial literacy and statistics as the advanced or elective options. For social studies, we saw U.S. world history, I'm sorry, U.S. history and world history is frequently requested alongside civics. I mean, civics is overwhelmingly the most clearly called-out focused area to make sure that we got specific about. And then we also saw some global history, world geography, and multicultural ethnic studies called out as a separate additional requirements for us to consider. In science, it really, there was a lot of consensus in science around the next generation standards, areas that are already identified. So life science, earth and space science, and physical science. I already spoke to the phys ed and health feedback a little bit. And then just that overall, there were some other areas that were identified as they relate to technology, computer science, engineering, and then just general themes around the need for students to be really proficient in research and data. Okay, so we also invited them to help us identify challenges to implementation. Many of these are ones that we already had heard from various stakeholders and had considered ourselves, as well as I know Tammy brought up at the last meeting, the need to make considerations around financial and budgetary constraints, staffing capacity challenges as well. That, of course, interacts with licensure. That needs to be a consideration. Adjustments that will need to be made to the curriculum design and current models and scheduling at schools. Overall, just equity and access concerns for diverse learners and CTE students that aligns with the feedback we saw in terms of what the most important aspects to our approach are to make sure this really will work for everyone. And then finally, just the themes around the challenges of change management and communication. Folks expressed that they were anticipating resistance to the change, specifically resistance to the loss of local control, as well as potentially the increased expectations for students and teachers themselves. As I mentioned, transferable skills was an area of inquiry for us because we've been hearing really mixed feedback in our stakeholder engagement leading up to the survey. Ultimately, what we saw in the survey was that 207 of the respondents believe that this lives best at the local level still, and 120 of them believe that it's necessary for us to make this decision at a state level. It's a big philosophical divide. And so what I've tried to outline for you here is kind of the two camps that people fall into and what their rationale is. So for those who are saying that they believe it should remain at the local level, they're acknowledging that in many cases, because transferable skills can be difficult to assess fairly and consistently, that, that the work that can be done locally to define, assess, and calibrate for that is most meaningful when it's not at a larger scale at the state level. And it also allows for the flexibility of the local community to inform which transferable skills feel most important to them. At this, the folks who fall into the state-level decision camp believe that it's important for us to standardize the consistency across districts as it relates to the transferable skills, including ensuring that the Vermont diploma, you know, represents the same things across the state like we're trying to accomplish through the statewide graduation requirements. And they acknowledge that when there are graduation requirements for specific transferable skills, that that's another example of where it gets very tricky if students move from one district to another, where there's different expectations around this. Setting aside the debate about where the decision best lies, there were some trends in terms of the approach to transferable skills that would be relevant whether it's decided at the state level or the local level. So the fact that it should be embedded in content was overwhelming in the feedback. It needs to be integrated. That's what makes it the most measurable and most relevant and most engaging for students. There's also a deep belief in the need for shared ownership that transferable skills provides really meaningful opportunities for teachers across content areas to collaborate with each other in terms of their approach to instruction and content. And then lastly, there was a loud and clear request for an avoidance of separate bureaucracy. Lots of folks raised the concern that if we treat transferable skills as separate, discrete requirements, that it creates unnecessary bureaucracy. These are quotes directly from the survey, but that it's milquetoast and onerous to do so. And so people clearly have some very strong feelings about our approach to this that we're taking into consideration. So as I close out here, I just want to identify what some of the ongoing tensions that we continue to hear are beyond the transferable skills, of course, is the ethnic and social equity studies component of the EQS from 2025. We want to make sure that this work isn't overshadowing the importance of the addition of that to the EQS and that we need to take a stance that makes clear how we would expect for them to be integrated into all content areas or if they should have separate and discrete requirements. And then also whether and how those decisions be made at the state level versus... We also need to, through this process, determine whether we believe that the statewide graduation requirements that should satisfy all minimum entrance requirements for higher education institutions. We continue to get questions around that. We know not all students are planning to go on to higher education institutions. And we know that sometimes students get to their senior year and think, well, I wasn't considering that, but now maybe I might be. And whether or not the graduation requirements give them enough of alignment to what those requirements are that they could catch up if they were to make a late decision and change their mind is an important part of the work. We also are wanting to be considerate of the overall level of flexibility and prescription. You know, obviously, 16.5 to 28.5 credits. 28.5 would become very prescriptive. Students end up with not as many free periods in their day that they're, they would have to be engaging in, in courses, flexible pathways, or elective opportunities to, to satisfy that many credits. And if we require too few, what does that mean? If students can finish, you know, faster than we would traditionally have expected, are we okay with that? And then, of course, how that kind of gets balanced out in terms of specific content or coursework requirements, like I was speaking to from the feedback in the survey, versus how many credits would be elective and more flexible and more up to the student's specific interests. We also know that making sure that this aligns to the work that happens in career tech centers is going to be very, very important. It's why I have a follow-up meeting tomorrow with the VACDAD folks. I anticipate at this point that that will be something that we highlight in our report as an area that, that needs further inquiry through your decision-making process to make sure that things are set up in a way that acknowledges the important work that happens in CTE centers and that that work can count toward the statewide graduation requirements and doesn't present a barrier to those students in their graduation path. So next steps, just a quick overview and then hopefully we'll have a, a little time here to discuss. We are wrapping up quickly the stakeholder engagement phase that we've been in so that we can pivot and begin working on the report and recommendations. As I outlined at the top, we plan to, where possible, make specific recommendations about what we believe should be included in the statewide requirements. And we intend to integrate the rationale for that based on our research within the state, outside of the state, and now using this feedback from the survey and stakeholder feedback throughout our other engagements. And we are going to include in the report those areas of further inquiry and a work plan for how we could support you in engaging further in those during your decision-making process. And then phase four, of course, and since we hand the ball over to you for, for the decision-making to actually happen and like I said, for us to be positioned to support you in that phase as well. I just want to close out by genuinely thanking all of the various stakeholders who've been engaged in this process. We know that a lot of significant changes on the horizon overall. And in the midst of that, it can be a very stressful time. And so, you know, folks have really been intentional about centering the experience for students in this decision and, and reflective about acknowledging the variation that's happening across the state. And, you know, while it's been an emotional process at times for folks, it's also, I think, been kind of a rallying cry for us to really come together and set the bar for what it is we want to provide to students through our statewide graduation requirements. Alrighty, I'm going to stop sharing so I can see you all. But if there are any specific slides that you'd like me to return to, I'm happy to pop those back up. Mohammed, I see I missed a question from you along the way around adult learning. And I don't know what slide I was on when you asked about this. Can you help me?
Yes, whether they were included in this graduation requirement, that is in progress, I have to say. I just, I just didn't see or hear them being mentioned anywhere. I see others here and there. But then, when you mentioned flexible pathways slide, I just have the assumption they could be included there as well. But I just want to make sure they are not forgotten.
That's right, because they're part of Act 77 as one of the defined flexible pathways. They have been involved in this process. And I apologize if I didn't call them out clearly. We've been working closely with our adult education team here at the agency to make sure we understand what the implications would be for adult education delivery, essentially, as it relates to that as a flexible pathway.
Yeah, I mentioned that just because from experience, we receive many immigrants or refugee students who come to us at older age, 16, 17. There is no way someone with interrupted education can graduate in two years upon arrival. So we are working with folks in that land really to get enrolled into the Vermont adult learning and really ensure they get the support as well to graduate, not just send them there without ensuring they're getting the support they should get.
That's right. We know those providers are doing such important work to make sure all of our students have access to graduation. We have an outstanding question to our legal team actually around what the specific implications would be because, of course, some of that funding is, is federal for that as well to make sure that we're just considering all angles and what the implications of that might be before we make our recommendations to you all. So that's in the works and certainly on our radar.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions for Erin?
I think I need to read through and digest it a little bit more, actually. But so no immediate questions at this point. But this is a great, incredible starting point. Thank you.
Yeah, that was really...
We'll certainly be sending you the decks.
Yeah, really helpful.
Yeah, we just got the, the survey just... Yeah, we just got the the survey just closed at midnight on Friday, so you all can guess how I spent my weekend. So it's truly hot off the press. I mean, I just was finalizing some of the slides for you just leading up to the meeting. And so we'll certainly get it over to you for you to do some more digestion and yeah, would welcome any feedback at that point, too.
And so Erin, the plan is that the agency is going to do the official handoff at our December meeting. Is that correct?
Well, technically, we have until the end of the month in December to get it to you.
Okay.
I would love to, I mean, we plan to be very far along with it to be able to to share what our recommendations are at the December meeting on the seventeenth, I believe we confirmed. And there might still be some final tweaking, formatting, editing kind of things that will be happening after that in order to get it to you by the end of the year.
Okay, so there might be additional. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that with the submission of the report, we will include some additional next steps. So we do have stakeholder engagement convenings scheduled beyond that December timeframe where we would like to focus on specific aspects of the recommendation. So we'll articulate that within the report. And we do see this as a continued collaboration as we've, you know, shared the recommendations with you. We know that there will be some additional questions, considerations that we'll need to work through and provide some additional guidance as you make your decision. But that'll be part of the of the plan.
One specific example is that we're planning to partner with Up for Learning to make sure that we can bring more student voice into the decision. We didn't have the level of engagement that we had hoped to through, you know, this pretty tight timeline where we've been working on this right now. And so we wanted to make sure that that wasn't overlooked. And so we we actually just met with Up for Learning yesterday about it. Are excited with the plans that we have in place for the way that we can engage with various student stakeholder groups, specifically thinking through the experience of CTE students, for example, different kinds of student paths that they they might take so that we can include that in in your considerations as you make your decision as well.
So we'll have another sort of follow-up presentation in December, and then the baton gets passed to the board and in January. We're going to have a very busy 2026.
Yes, all of us collectively. I'm excited for what's on the horizon for students. I really do believe that if we can make some meaningful progress in defining what this is, that the the potential for the agency to provide additional support and for supervisor unions and school districts to cooperate with each other and learn from each other is really going to be magnified.
Yeah, well, and I'm reflecting to the, and to paraphrase Zoe, it's all interconnected. I mean, you can't really do this piecemeal. It kind of all has to happen simultaneously to, you know, shift us to something bigger and better. Okay, any other final questions for Erin or Zoe? Hearing none. Again, thank you very much. This was really a lot of good information. I appreciate you sort of crunching the data and giving that to us. And so maybe board members between now and December go back through that slide deck and, you know, really get familiar with it because I think whatever we do in December, we'll be building on that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up on the agenda is a discussion of the 2026 schedule. And this was actually Cynthia's request, so thank you, Cynthia. So I thought it would be helpful to kind of ground what next year might look like, both in terms of, you know, when and how we're meeting, but also what we are going to be looking at. So just and and I'm going to start this, but I figured we could have a conversation, you know, I have a scheduled. We can go over a little bit, but you know, like ten or fifteen minutes just to kind of get the conversation started. So just to ground us, since, well, prior to COVID, the board always met in person. During COVID, like everyone else, the board went completely online. And since we've come out of COVID and since I've been the chair, there's no magic to this, but I'm really kind of trying to strike a balance between, I think it's easier for board members because we all have day jobs. It is easier for members of the public when we meet online. So I recognize that and personally, you know, I like the online model. At the same time, there is real value in getting together as a group. And, you know, it's it's hard to get to know people if, you know, we're playing the Brady Bunch on a computer screen. So I've tried to kind of strike a balance where, you know, we meet in person a couple of times in the fall, a couple of times in the spring, and just to kind of rehash, you know, how this works. When we're meeting virtually, we tend to meet, you know, at eight thirty in the morning. The meetings tend to end, you know, twelve thirty one, something like that. That's that's kind of the online format. And the way we do that, it's, you know, just starting at the beginning of the year, January, February, March, May, June, no, not June, July, August, November, December. And then we meet in person typically April and May and September and October. And those meetings where we meet in person, we try to meet in a school. I've tried to honor board members who are going off the board, whether they're adults or students, because that just makes my life easier to figure out what school we're going to go to. And then I've tried to start with a tour of the school, a board lunch, and then we do our meeting in the afternoon. So that tends to be a longer day when we're meeting in person. But again, to me, the value of getting into a school is really grounding what we're doing and why we're here, you know, serving as members of the State Board of Education. I think the schools really appreciate having the State Board come to visit. At the same time, I recognize that we are in a position because we're like inserting ourselves into their school day. And so I'm trying to give board members ample notice because personally, I would really encourage all of you when we're meeting in person to make an effort to be there and to be there for the full day. I think it's really invaluable to see the different schools that we have across the state because I have yet to see two schools that are the same. I've, I mean, the common thread is there's an awful lot of passion, care for students, pride in accomplishments. I always leave those days feeling more energized and just really proud of the work that we're doing. I love them. But it's really important, I think, for board members to see, like for all board members to see that, to be there in person, to tour the school, to have lunch with your fellow board members, it's Maureen and Suzanne when we get them to join us. There's real value in that. So I just, I want to bring this back because I know, again, we all have day jobs. What gets really tricky is when board members start falling off or, you know, not being there for one thing but coming late. And then at a certain point, we have to start worrying about quorum issues. So although I understand that things come up, plans change, people are conflicted. I would just really encourage all of us, when we know in the meetings are going to be, to make yourselves available for the full day. So that's my first thought. Then, in terms of work that we have coming up, this is not a comprehensive list, but, you know, just looking at Act seventy three and things that are going to be falling on our lap. We've got reopening EQS in twenty two hundred by August first of twenty twenty six to ensure compliance with class size minimums, assuming that the General Assembly comes up with class size minimums. We are going to continue getting through our backlog of independent school approvals. We've got statewide graduation requirements that we're going to be developing with the agency's help and assistance. And then we're also going to be determining our roles and responsibilities. So I know that Sarah Buckston, who's here, has been working in the background to sort of understand currently what is our charge in statute across all, you know, of the Vermont statutes annotated. And then really thinking about what does it make sense for the board to keep? What makes sense to sort of pass off to, you know, whether it's the Agency of Education or someone else? And for the things that we keep, what rules need to be updated, what rules need to be sunsetted, what rules don't need to be rules and can be just, you know, policies. And then from there, what I think would be really, really helpful is to create a framework for, you know, now, now that the board understands what it is that we're doing and how we're operating, like let's create the standard operating procedures. I think that work will probably last beyond twenty twenty six. But that's kind of the ultimate goal here. So that, you know, when I think about what the State Board of Ed is doing, I think it will be really helpful to have some clarity and to really understand the universe in which we're operating and, you know, doing things that really play to our strengths. Because I think we kind of operate in the ten thousand to, you know, maybe forty thousand foot level in terms of education in Vermont. Let me pause there and just see if anyone else has anything that they want to add, either in terms of, you know, the nuts and bolts of how we meet or things that we're going to be working on and, you know, where we're going next year. Tom?
Yeah, just one thing that I think is on our docket are the CTE rules. Are they, is that another?
Yes. And actually, I had had that kind of a higher ranking priority. But I do think that the General Assembly is going to be looking a lot at CTE in the coming legislative session. So I, as I think about it, what probably makes sense is for that not to be the first thing that we pick up in twenty twenty six because I think we might have greater clarity after the end of this legislative session. I don't want to sit on that unnecessarily. And I do, I mean, we've been very clear that it's really important to have, you know, CTE kind of follow along with EQS in twenty two hundred. So I don't want to put that off indefinitely, but that was the the feedback that I got was that we might want to wait a little bit just to see if if things change. Anything else? Was that helpful? So, okay. And Sarah, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add to that.
No, I'll take my direction from your priority setting.
Okay.
But I do have a great document that I'll be working on and will have for the board to look at probably in the next four to six weeks. It's a probably sixty pages at this point, but it's just going through the different roles and responsibilities of the board as it's mentioned in statute and identifying where that exists, both in Title sixteen and in other places in Vermont law. And then I'm also for board members, just doing a plain language sort of side by side so that you sort of can understand with a real quick look of the eye what that responsibility is. And then you guys can take a glance at that and see what strikes you as some low hanging fruit for cleaning up and what you want to spend some more time on and then can direct me to work on accordingly.
Right. And we do have our roles and responsibilities committee, which has been formed. So I think once you finish that work, it would go first to the roles and responsibilities committee and then, you know, we'll work through that and then, you know, bring recommendations back to the board. Full word.
Jen, just beginning as a new board member, trying to figure out when meetings are happening, what's going on. Balancing this with the consulting business has been a little challenging. And so starting two thousand twenty six with like a very clear framework of what we're working on and meeting dates, even though those could change, would be extremely helpful and hopefully helpful for new board members as they come on.
So I don't know why, but we now meet on the third Wednesday of the month. We used to meet on Mondays and I do, and and maybe that's a discussion that we could have. I mean, I think on the one hand, once everyone kind of knows that we're meeting on the third Wednesday of the month, it's kind of hard to rip up that foundation and start afresh. I think the benefit of having a meeting on a Monday instead of a Wednesday is that when the General Assembly is in session, they never meet on Mondays. And so it would allow us to have conversations with legislators if we have meetings on a Monday. That is one of the things that we kind of miss out by having it on a Wednesday. But I'm not sure, you know, how often we would have members of the legislature coming in and talking to the board. And I mean, at this point, we all know that the meetings are the third Wednesday of the month. So I don't know if there's any appetite to move off of that, but I'm certainly open to suggestion. All right, I'm I'm not hearing any. Sarah?
This, this doesn't have to do with the Monday decision. That's, that's a U decision. But it occurred to me just as Cynthia was talking about sort of wanting to have a sense of maybe when there are going to be some pinch points. In rulemaking, the way that that it works in Vermont is the authorizing agency, in this case, the board, would propose, would draft the rule, and then you would bring it to ICAR, the Inter Interagency Committee on Administrative Rules. And that starts the clock with an eight-month timeframe to complete the rulemaking process. What you could anticipate is that if the board is supposed to commence rulemaking on or before August first of twenty twenty six, that means that not a, sometime in July, we'll have to bring the approved rule from the board to ICAR. So that's likely to be one of their dates in July, unless they decide to skip July, which we'll have to be on the lookout for. And then we move back another month because the board will have to approve the rule. And so you can anticipate that to the extent that the board may decide to have a subcommittee do the brunt of the work, which could be weekly meeting, bi-weekly meeting, a small group of people kind of instructing me on what to bring forth or to propose. That might be early twenty twenty six with one or more board meetings. And I, this is really for you guys to decide and for Jennifer to to direct, but it's, I would guess like April, May, June would be the timeframe when the board would be most involved in that initial approval of the the rule that you will propose. After April, I'm sorry, August first, then you'll be having public hearings. You'll get public input. There'll be any revisions, a lot of public process at that point that also involves the board, both in showing up at meetings and or public hearings, et cetera. So I, in terms of that timeline, I just wanted to give you a sense of that's how that works.
Although the August first deadline is to open the rule, it is not to conclude the rulemaking.
Exactly, exactly. So we just need to get the rule to ICAR before August one, twenty twenty six. And often in the history of the board, you've brought a rule before ICAR and it has changed. You know, you've done a lot of work after that process, which is sort of how it's supposed to, it's intended to to be really reflective of comment and other things that you've heard. So.
Yeah, and I think the tricky thing with EQS in twenty two hundred, you know, making updates per Act seventy three is that we've been directed to reopen the rules to ensure compliance with class size minimums. But there are no class size minimum standards yet because that will be discussed during the upcoming legislative session. So again, this is one of those things where I know it's potentially coming, but I don't know for sure that it's coming. And so it's, you know, we're going to kind of have to read the tea leaves a little bit when the General Assembly is back in session. And, you know, I wouldn't want to start the work at the beginning of the year because I I wouldn't want to engage in that work and then not have any requirements set forth in statute. So there's a little bit of a wait and see, but we are aware we're following it and, you know, we'll we'll be ready to act.
Just a quick point of clarification. It, the Act seventy three did set some class size minimums. I'll I'll throw it into the chat, but it's not effective until July one, twenty twenty six, and you're supposed to open rulemaking August, by August one of twenty twenty six. It's a not very well thought out timeframe. But, but I mean, I think your point is still well taken. Things could change, but I can see Tammy making gestures on that. She.
I was just going to say, I think, you know, when we've done the EQS and the independent school rules before, like we did a lot of pre-work on this stuff. And my only concern is that, again, I think the things that we're going to do here are going to require that kind of pre-work. So I think we've got to think about what that calendar looks like, right? And there's going to be a lot of back and forth on this stuff. And I think the other thing to take into consideration is, is if we're doing a major overhaul of all the rules, right? Like, how did that time, time, like I, I don't want to open up the EQS twice. Right?
Right.
And I want to, I very, I feel very strongly about wanting the independent school rules, the CTE rules and the EQS rules staying in alignment and then moving through as a package. Right? Because otherwise, we're going to get tweaks here and tweaks there, and then these three are not going to be aligned anymore. Right? And we had, Jennifer, we had to do that last time with the independent school rules and the EQS. And so, you know, And so, you know, I guess what I'm saying is if we think all that isn't going to work within the timeframe that is in statute right now, I think we need to signal a preference around a timeline that does work for us to do that. Right? Because it, I, I appreciate all the deadlines and I understand what the legislatures intend here is. But there are a lot of moving pieces and I don't, I'm quite sure that they share our interest in not having to open these things multiple times and having incoherence across rules. It's just going to make for a clunky, inefficient process that ends up with bad policy.
Yeah. I agree.
So Sarah, my, my sense is if we're feel like we should map out what we actually think needs to happen in terms of our pre-work too. And if that timeline doesn't work with what's in statute, we need to start signaling very early in the legislative session about that and ask for a different timeline for, for statute to be revised.
Good point.
Yeah, particularly.
I just don't see how this all gets done well by August 1st. That's after having co-chaired the EQS committee last time around, right? Like this is not, and the things that we're being asked to do are not going to be minor tweaks on which people have no opinions.
I, just based on the way Act 173 was drafted, I suspect that what perhaps they thought was, was what I've put here in the chat, would you would just open up the rules and like cut and paste their language. It's already in statute into rules, which, I mean, why would you have rules? You need to have some interpret, you, you are going to need to interpret that and to have some consideration, as you've just stated. You know, Tammy, so that, that one month timeline isn't fully.
It also doesn't contemplate the synergies across three different sets of rules. Right? Where we need alignment, but it is not a simple lift and shift. Right? Like, you know, this kind, as you know, Sarah, because we've gone around this block more than once, right? That because the ways the rules are currently constructed, they're operating in separate lanes and yet we still have to maintain alignment across the three. Right? And this, this approach doesn't allow us to do that. And the minute we have misalignment, we're going to have a child walking from one, one, across the hall and have entirely different roles in, 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 in the same building or children in the same district under, like we can't do that.
Okay. So Sarah, I think you have some clarity and maybe like you and Tammy and I can follow up and then.
Yep. I can map out some, some different options. And then you have something to kind of say, all right, this definitely isn't going to work or already can work in this, in this manner. And then you can talk about it as a board about whether you want to create some advocacy around the direction you want to go.
Yeah. Yeah. And I do, I do think it makes sense. You know, we, we need to have CTE sort of in line with EQS and 2200 and sort of thinking about how to do this and do it once, so that we're not like doing EQS version four. I mean, like no one wants that, especially because we have other rules that we're going to need to update. So I think.
It's also bad for the field, right? Like whenever we open up these rules, it is, it creates instability in the field, right? And that is not what we need right now.
Yeah.
Too much change.
Right. Anything else on this topic?
It sounds Zoe's hand was up for a second, but then she took it down and I just didn't know if you saw that.
I did.
I'm sorry.
All right. So future meeting planning, let me just pull up my list wherever it is. Hang on. Never find it when I'm looking for it. Okay. So for December, there will be a final update from the commission. We are going to have an update from Rich. We'll have the by necessity committees. There'll be a discussion and vote on the proposed standards for schools to be deemed small by necessity and sparse by necessity. We'll have an update on graduation requirements. We'll do the resolution for Lyle. I'm going to keep this on the agenda, you know, potentially DQS waivers from districts, independent school approvals. And the other thing that Sarah and I are working on is the annual report to the General Assembly. So I will try to get a draft out to board members in advance of our December meeting. And then we can discuss and vote on it at the December meeting. Does anyone else have any other agenda items that come to mind?
Tom, are we meeting this Friday?
I don't have any schools on the docket right now.
Great. Great. Thank you. Cynthia?
Um, sorry, I meant to put that down, but it's probably more a question for Tom on getting back into a regular schedule for school reviews. And, and hopefully the agency will be ready for us when we're there. I know there's been a lot of back and forth with those meetings as well.
All right. So let me just kind of finish out the rest of today's meeting. We have board members, we have an executive session that we have scheduled that I put as the last agenda item of the today's meeting. And so, which is to say that we're going to do public comment now, just so that members of the public who might wish to address the board don't have to wait until we come back out of executive session. So we'll do public comment and then you guys all should have received a link for the executive session. When we get to that point, then we're going to, you know, everyone's going to hang up from this meeting and then join the executive session. And then when we're done with the executive session, we'll come back into this meeting and I will need a quorum so that we can adjourn the meeting. So we've got a couple of steps set up for us. So with that, let me turn to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the board. Elizabeth Burrows. You have the floor. And as always, we ask members of the public to limit themselves to two minutes. And if you have anything that you would like to submit to be included with the minutes, you are definitely welcome to do that. Welcome.
Hi. Believe it or not, I don't have anything to say about Act 73 today at all. I really am. I, I came into your, your meeting close to the beginning and I heard you talking about AI and what it's doing to our schools and its potential uses. And I really stuck all the way to the end of the meeting so that I could share with you that our legislature has been really keeping a close eye on what the federal government is doing. I'm going to share a link in the chat. Because there have, there have been several tries to limit state legislatures from regulating AI in any way. And so I am here to urge you to be and remain informed about this issue because it's, it's a much bigger issue than, than just student use of AI. And it's something that we should all be aware of and, and remain aware of. That's it actually. Nice work. And I, I'm really excited about the, the graduation requirements finally being developed in a thoughtful way. Thanks.
Thank you. And I see that Tammy also just put something in the chat. So Tammy, I'll let you.
I was just going to share, the American Studies for Research just launched an entire network with millions of dollars in funding to look at AI in schools, the impacts of AI in teaching and learning and also leadership and processes. And so I just put that in there. If you care, there'll still be a lot of really important research coming out of that. And I'm pleased to be leading one of those studies.
Thank you. And let me just ask, Maureen, are we able to capture what's being put in the chat so that it gets included with the minutes?
Yes, I'm copying those links and I will include them and the others in the minutes. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to address the board? I'm not seeing any. So at this point, I'm going to close off our public comment. And I am going to move pursuant to one VSA, section 313A1, that the board finds that premature general public knowledge of confidential attorney-client communications regarding pending litigation and made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the State Board of Education would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We'll give it to Rich. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? Okay. Then I further move that the board enter executive session to receive confidential attorney-client communications regarding pending litigation and made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the board pursuant to one VSA, section 313A1F. Is there a second?
Yeah, also.
All right. Seconded by Rich. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? All right. The motion carries. So again, we are going to leave this meeting entirely and then pick up the link to the executive session and I will see you all momentarily. Thank you.